Welcome, everybody, to the February seventeenth Carter County Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Shin, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You remember what number it was?
I got it.
I'm six.
Okay. Before we ask Reverend Terry McGinnis to lead the invocation, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the plane crash victims. February thirteenth was the third year anniversary of that, and Reverend McGinnis has a special connection to that. One of those young boys was his grandson. So if you will, we'll have a moment of silence for the plane crash. Okay. Pastor Terry, would you mind leading us into invocation?
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as is in heaven. God, I praise you for these commissioners, these individuals, Lord, who we've entrusted our county to, Father, through votes. I praise you, Lord, for their determination to continue to make this county grow, grow in always, Father, for the interests they have in children, the Boy Scouts, the school system. I praise you, Father God, for this county, Father. This is not the end of the world, as I've heard people say in my ministry. We've moved to the end of the world. We were here before Raleigh. And Father God, I praise you for the people in this county, and I praise you for these ones that have been commissioned to let us not forget where we came from. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, preacher. Would like to remind everybody to silence our cell phones, and I will read the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in a particular matter. We're all good? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Moore, all in favor? Anonymous.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the consent agenda and to remove item number six from the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor? Have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Motion to approve by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Waldr, all in favor? There we go. Next, we will have a resolution honoring Paul Murphy for his many years in scouting. Do we have some scouts next door?
Ready to flood the room?
You've got plenty of them. Forty-five years is a long time scouting, over eight hundred glorious nights in the woods. Boys got more merit badges than generals got. Move down that way just a little bit. There you go.
Part of Brown City.
There you go. You're good right there. All right, I'm gonna read this resolution without trying to get choked up, and then we're gonna have a moment to take a picture. Resolution by the Carter County Board of Commissioners honoring Paul Murphy for his service to his community. Whereas Mr. Paul Murphy has spent the last forty-five years serving as scoutmaster with Troop Two Five Two in Davis, whereas as a young man, he earned his own Eagle Scout rank in nineteen seventy-two. And whereas Mr. Murphy has influenced the lives of over three hundred and fifty local scouts, teaching them leadership skills, the importance of teamwork, citizenship, and the values of integrity, respect, and self-confidence. And whereas Mr. Murphy has received numerous accolades for his dedication to our youth, including Scout Master of the Year, the Bob Howard Award for Voluntarism, the McCain Award shared with his wife Sherry, the Governor's Award for Outstanding Service, and the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Whereas, under the leadership of Mr. Murphy, Troop Two Five Two has been recognized as an honor unit, quality unit, or gold unit respectively since the nineteen eighties, while also earning such honors as being named two thousand and sixteen Volunteer Group of the Year by the Coors Sound Waterfowl Museum and Heritage Center. Receiving a thirty-year plaque in two thousand and twenty from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for their adopted highway litter pickup program, and being named the two thousand and twenty-three Troop of the Year for North Carolina by the American Legion. And whereas, Mr. Murphy has generously given his personal time to teach, lead, and influence young people into becoming service-minded citizens that perform community projects that benefit all of Carter County. And nowfore, be it resolved that the Carter County Board of Commissioners expresses heartfelt gratitude and honor Mr. Murphy for his many years of dedicated service to Carter County, its youth, and its citizens. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Carter County Board of Commissioners as a permanent record and reminder of the selfless service and respect for one of Carter County's finest community leaders, Mr. Paul Murphy, adopted this seventeenth day of February, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you, sir.
There you official. Hold the signal on there. Paul had about one hundred and fifty, one hundred and seventy-five people at the Coors Sound Waterfowl Museum. We had a special ceremony honoring him. He was very nice. I might want to get a haircut.
Okay, next, we have public comment. If you will, when your name is called, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Shelley Odom.
My name is Shelley Odom. Address is four ten Lanyard Drive, Newport, North Carolina. I am here in representation of Morehead City Little League. A father of four wonderful kids, family physician in Morehead City, and I've had the honor of being on the Board of Directors over the last couple of years at Morehead City Little League. It's been great. Gotten to meet a lot of people, a lot of great kids, a lot of interest, and the interest has only grown as the time has been that I've been with the Little League. I'll say that last season, the last two seasons, I've been in charge of more of the younger divisions, the T-ballers and the junior rookie machine pitch divisions. And we have just loaded up the fields. I mean, we've got two or three teams on the fields at a time, and even with that, still not enough room because the growth and interest in Morehead City Little League has just grown. We started to use the parks, the fields behind Morehead City Parks and Rec, and that even has really limited our ability to what we can do because you just don't have enough room. And now it's sounding like we're gonna lose those fields, and the big concern is that we're not gonna have enough field capacity to be able to address that issue, allow these kids to be able to continue to play. Little League is something near and dear to my heart because, I mean, I'm a product of Little League baseball. I mean, those are memories that I have throughout my life. I still have those friendships today with friends that I played ball with in Little League. And many of those individuals have grown up and stayed out of trouble. They're giving back to their communities. Some of them also in medicine, some of them police officers, some of them actually turned around and actually are working with Parks and Rec in their communities that they live in. So I see the value in Little League baseball. I see the interest in our community, and since being on the board, how many people have poured their time and some of their money and their investments into making sure that the Little League can continue to support the amount of interest that's there? I only see that it's growing. We're already seeing more kids interested in playing this year in those younger divisions than we have in previous years, but yet we have less field availability. So my discussion and purpose of being here today is to try to open some conversation about options that we may be able to have to increase funding or support of maybe initial facilities or fields or something so that some of these kids don't miss out on being able to participate in this great endeavor. So thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Chuck Linder.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Chuck Linder, Atlantic Beach, North Carolina, president of Morehead City Little League. On March twenty-second, Morehead City Little League opening ceremony at Swenson Park, we will be celebrating the seventieth year of Little League baseball in Carter County. On that day, you will hear the Little League pledge recited. Those are powerful words for our youth and adults alike. It goes like this. "I trust in God, I love my country, and will respect its laws. I will play fair and strive to win, but win or lose, I will always do my best." Written by the first Little League president, Peter J. McGovern, in nineteen fifty-four, sent to the desk of President Dwight D. Eisenhower, February twenty-second, nineteen fifty-five. His response by a letter to Mr. McGovern was, "Thank you for sending me the inspiring and fine pledge that I understand will be repeated at the start of the Little League games. I'm always glad to hear the plans and activities of Little League." Little League is now a registered and international organization throughout the world. It's regarded as the largest youth sports organization in the world. Every member of Little League is a volunteer. No one gets paid. We do it because we want our children to benefit from physical activity, skill development, character building, and personal growth. While we understand they may leave Carter County for opportunities of a higher education, we would love for them to return home to become productive citizens. I delve back into Little League history because I think it's vital to understand history. In the nineteen sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, there were many baseball fields in Morehead City. Shevins Park had a baseball field, then the town grew and the baseball field was removed. There were fields at Camp Glenn, Lupton Field, Morehead Central. Morehead City grew and the baseball fields disappeared. There is a baseball field at Morehead City Primary, it's gone. Morehead City Middle School had a baseball field, softball field. It hasn't been used for years. The renovation of Sixteenth and Fisher in Morehead City looks like the baseball, softball fields there will be removed. Under the new proposal asking the county to transfer Swenson Park to the city, the town of Morehead City may see a net gain of fields, but the user groups at Swenson's will suffer a net loss. Without the fields at Sixteenth and Fisher, we will struggle to have enough fields to practice and play games. There are other user groups to consider. Girls' softball is growing, travel ball teams are forming, folks are trying to get Babe Ruth started. There are simply not enough fields in the city or county to accommodate the future growth. Would it be feasible to gather the user groups in a formal setting to sit down and gather their input? Will the county be willing to lead discussion with their municipalities to identify land and build a new park to provide more fields? If the citizens and elected officials really want to help the kids, I firmly believe the conversation needs to be about adding more athletic facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Amy Wyborski.
Thank you. I won't even touch it. Amy Wyborski, I live at two ten South Spooner Street in Morehead City. My husband and I have a ten-year-old son, Bentley, who was in fourth grade at Morehead Elementary at Camp Glenn. He loves three sports right now, baseball, basketball, and soccer. We moved here in two thousand and fifteen, but I've always thought of this area as my home. We vacationed here. My parents now live here, retired. Both my brothers and their families live here with a business that they support and is thriving here. So the Crystal Coast has always had a special place in our heart. But sadly, things are not the way I remember growing up. There's no more jungle land, there's no more bowling alleys, there's no more skating rinks, there's no more go-karts, there's literally nothing for children to do here for birthday parties, anything. We always have to leave Carteret County, or at least Morehead City proper. But while these activities have continued to dwindle, sadly, the amount of storage units continue to rise, and I won't even get started about substance abuse amongst our community. But tonight, I want to talk about investing in our youth sports. So for me, it's an investment for my son to learn life skills, to build friendships, to learn how to be coached, to understand the benefits of fitness, to understand the opportunity to experience things of being part of something bigger than himself. And it's not about winning. Being on a losing team has also helped him to learn and grow and experience things as not every child's gonna make it to the MLB, although we have, you know, a couple around here that have done that. They're not gonna make it to the MLS, some of them won't even make it to sports in high school. But if we invest in our youth, the return on that investment through their experience, their development, life lessons, and fun is the best that any parent can make. But for you, in my last minute, I think it's worth reminding that today, youth sports is a huge business. This past year, American families have spent more than a combined thirty billion dollars in youth sports. We shell out hundreds, thousands of dollars per child, per season, per sport. That's for uniforms, meals, hotels, all the travel things that come with it. As an example, during a recent just-two-day tournament, my family spent nearly a thousand dollars in hotels and meals alone, and nothing fancy unless you count Applebee's like Walker Hayes does. But consider, we were just one family on one team in one bracket in one division at one tournament. That tournament had sixty-four teams outside of its local area. Twelve families per team, that's seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in one weekend, one tournament. So I know you're probably spinning in your head, gosh, that's good tax revenue, how do we get that here? So think about this, if we had a baseball tournament here, soccer, indoor volleyball, everything on one weekend, I think it's just the perfect time to quote, "If you build it, they will come." So I strongly urge you to consider investing in our youth. I think it's something that we would all benefit from as opposed to another metal building holding someone else's extra belongings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angie Bradshaw.
Good evening. Angie Bradshaw, eighteen fifteen Old Farm Road, Morehead City. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm up here representing the Morehead City Girls' Softball as well as Morehead City Little League. With the immense growth of youth sports in this area, I'm here just asking how we can work together to acquire more space for these leagues as they continue to grow. With our second season of softball starting, we'll have three to four teams. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but for a second season, it's pretty dang good around here. And we only have one playing field to play games on. Little League will have anywhere from twenty-five to twenty-eight teams this year. We use the space behind the Parks and Rec building for practice, but currently do not know the timeline for the demolition of that space as they're planning on expanding that. So we will lose that area for practice. For softball, we will be left with one field, which means I can't even hold a practice if we have a game scheduled. Last year, we had to share the one softball field at Swenson Park with the Morehead Middle School, and I'm pretty sure they have a practice field on their school property, but it's not maintained. So if that continues, we will also have to work around their schedule. I've been reading all these articles about how Anzo County's getting this immaculate four-hundred-acre complex, indoor/outdoor space, being able to accommodate basketball, or I'm sorry, baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse, football, all the sports. Wouldn't that be something if we could do that in Carteret County, huh? We're not up here asking for four hundred acres. We're just simply asking for you to stop and just think about, instead of just the restaurants and the shopping facilities and the storage facilities, our kids need a sporting facility to be proud of also. When anything in this county is planned, the main focus is always, how much revenue will this bring to Carteret County? Could you imagine the revenue that's bringing Anzo County with four-hundred-acre facility like they're building? Little League holds a wood bat tournament every year. This is, this year, the organization Perfect Games is looking to bring ninety to a hundred teams, and that's just for one weekend, one weekend tournament. The revenue from just that one weekend produces enough for us Little Leagues that we don't have to hold any other fundraisers for our kids to be able to play baseball. Little League and our softball, new softball organization would love to host more tournaments for our youth, but the baseball field conditions and lack of softball fields, we simply cannot make that happen. We will have a chance to hold our district softball tournament here, but I can't do that with just one field. So I believe this endeavor will take the county, will take the county, the town of Morehead, the town of Atlantic Beach, and the town of Pine Hill Shores to all work together. I would love nothing more than to sit down with the group willing to help us accomplish our goals and see what we can make happen for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Aubrey Spence.
Aubrey Spence, five oh nine Pine Valley, Morehead City, North Carolina. I here, I'm here also to represent Morehead City Little League, and approximately six years ago, a friend of mine, me and a friend of mine, decided that we wanted to improve the baseball program in Morehead City. So we decided we would start a travel ball program with one team. And in a short amount of time, we're up to six teams now. We have age groups from nine to fifteen that represent Morehead City Makos. Those teams represent Morehead City in places like Houston, Texas, Florida, Georgia, soon, New York City, not New York City, in New York, for Cooperstown. To say the least, the interest in travel ball has exploded in Carteret County. Also with Angie's group in softball, it's at a feverish pitch. There are a lot of kids who are interested in that level of competition. I also represent Morehead City Little League because I'm on the board, and I've been coaching, been coaching all my life, but coaching with Morehead for the last six years. And we have to share these little, these, this little select group of fields that we have at Swenson Park with travel ball, with softball, with Little League, with men's softball, with kickball, adult kickball. So to say the least, it's not only the youth that's struggling. We also have young adults who use those fields that we have to share. So it's not only just Morehead, I see it in Newport also. So all across the county, even in Western Park, I'm responsible for, as the president of the Mako program, I'm responsible for making sure that each one of these teams have places to practice, and it's a struggle, it really is. It's really hard to find a place for these guys to work, and I'm sure this group knows, you can't get better unless you're working and working hard. And it's hard to practice if we don't have places to work and practice at. So I thank you for your time. I think the rest of the group here has said it very well. We're in desperate need of space and places to, for our kids and for young adults to work and practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aubrey. Thank you, Mr. Spence. Councilman Harvey Walker.
Welcome to the dark side, my friend.
Good evening.
Good evening. I did not know all these people were here for the Little League, but I came here to speak for you all tonight. I'm not here as a councilman. I'm here to represent the athletes and the proposed athletes and those that want to be them. I used to be one, believe it or not. The only difference now is when they time me to run 100, I don't use a stopwatch, I use a calendar. But I want you all to know that my observation is this: our youth is our future. My observation is that we need to start preparing now in development. Any plans that we make for the development of Carteret County needs to include recreation. We're growing, but let's don't try to catch up, let's be on the front end. I think you've heard it a lot from everybody out here. I'm here to support that. If you need any help, I'm here to help. But let's help our youth, let's provide property, let's put some fields together, make it first-class. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The Honorable Bob Kavanaugh.
Well, the dollar's forcing Monty, I hope I get it out of the park.
Hope everybody will keep Commissioner Clark in their thoughts and prayers. He's very, very sick and unable to be here tonight. We asked Bob to pinch hit and sit in his old seat, and he said, "No, thank you, he wants us to speak in public timing."
You know, when you were calling for a show of hands earlier around votes, I had to fight the reflex to raise my hand back there. It's crazy. Mary Ann Keith, I failed to say hello when I came in, so hello. Let's start off with the billion dollars. If you take a billion, one-dollar bills, a dollar bill is 43 1/1,000ths of an inch thick. If you stack a billion-dollar, one-dollar bills one on top of the other, it creates a stack 68 miles high. To put that in perspective, it's 69 miles to Kinston. So, imagine that long drive, and you just drive, every 4.3 inches is a thousand bucks. So, it adds up quickly. Now, what's all this about? The, this is about illegal immigration and the burden it puts on Americans in not only costs, but in crime. And I'm going to run through some statistics here, so I hope your eyes don't glaze over too much. But in 2023, now trying to find data, accurate data on the internet is hard. There are so many conflicting websites and conflicting agendas that it's extremely difficult to nail down a precise number on anything. So, you're left taking best estimates. And I tried my best to find, you know, what I consider reliable information. In 2023, there was an estimated 15.5 million illegals residing in the United States, plus 5.4 million citizen children of these illegals. So, they're, they're, they come here and they give birth and automatically got an anchor baby. In 2023, estimate was $182 billion in, in funds to fund this whole illegal migration thing. And in return, we get $31 billion, or 17% of the outlay, back in taxes from these migrants that may be working within the country. And this $182 billion, it's, it's spread over a web that you give one group money, then they disperse it to other groups, then they disperse it out. And Senate Majority Leader Harry Reid, when, when he was in office, he said, "The quickest way to get wealthy in the United States is start a nonprofit." And a lot of this money is going into these nonprofits, and it's hard to track. A lot of them, the government's not requiring them to keep records. That's from a Forbes article, these, these non-government organizations, these nonprofits. The Catholic Charities of the USA received $1.4 billion from the government to, for support, compared to a billion dollars in, in normal private collections. The Lutheran Immigration Refugee Service, they, they received another $93 million in government grants. And in the following year, in 2022, it was boosted, they doubled it to 182 million. And it just goes on and on and on. As I said, the grants go out to these groups, it gets dispersed. It's these NGOs that are paying for all this transportation of flying illegals around the country, and they're not required to keep records, and there's no accountability. And that's how you end up losing 300,000 children of, of these border crossings. And in September, looking at the crime statistics, in September of 2024, at the House Committee on Homeland Security, the chairman Mark Green of Tennessee issued a statement, and I'm sure you've heard this before, that new data from the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, is showing that as of July of 2024, there were 650,000 criminal illegal aliens that were currently on ICE's non-detained docket and roaming free in the communities. They got released because of Biden's catch-and-release thing, you weren't allowed to hold them. This figure includes roughly 15,000 individuals convicted and charged with murder, more than 20,000 sexual assaults, and more than 105,000 aggravated assaults, over 60,000 burglaries and larceny, 126,000 traffic offenses, almost 17,000 weapons offenses, and it just goes on and on and on. North Carolina population right now is approximately 10.8 million residents. North Carolina's top law enforcement agencies don't compile data about crimes committed by non-citizens. The SBI doesn't track crimes committed by non-citizens, nor do State Departments of Public Safety or the state's attorneys general. The one reliable place I could find that had some accurate information was the website and a group called NC Fire. It's ncfire.info, and it stands for, where is it here? North Carolina's for Immigration Reform and Enforcement. And pursuant to the state open records law, North Carolina general statutes, public records, criminal investigation laws, and access to records laws, that allows NC Fire to obtain and post the arrest records of any and all of the individuals arrested in North Carolina. Now, what they specifically collect is sex offenses against minors. And it runs from aggravated rape to, what is it, when you have consensual rape of a minor? But it, it runs, it runs a gamut of sexual offenses, all the way from aggravated rape down to fondling. A lot of these folks, the offenses are committed against the children of the woman that they have taken up residence with. A report issued in March of 2014 entitled "The Fiscal Burden of Illegal Immigration on North Carolinians" estimates that about 410,000 illegal aliens reside in the state of North Carolina as of 2013. Senator Tillis just recently upgraded that to half a million. So, this is 2013 data. In addition, there were about 120,000 anchor babies. These were children born of illegal aliens living in North Carolina, who, like other US-born children, may participate in means testing programs and benefits. These two groups cost North Carolina citizens $2.4 billion per year in taxes. If you go back to the, the stack of dollar bills, that $2.4 billion comes out to 163 miles, which puts you somewhere between Raleigh and Durham if you left North, Morehead City. There's no specific information about how many illegals are imprisoned in the North Carolina prison system. The only other number I could get was on the, the federal prison system. About 15% of the members there are incarcerated. And crunching what numbers I could find, came out to about 22,000, and at a, at a cost of about $40,000 a year. It was almost $100 million to keep illegal aliens locked up in the federal system. Now, going back to the NC Fire group, their records go all the way back to 2009. And if you pull up the website, you scroll down to the bottom, and you come to lists of, by year, which is broken down by month. This is the 2022 monthly child rapes by illegal aliens. Now, if you click on the individual month, like this is broken down December, November, all the way down to January, as you go through the list, all the different years, and open up the, the tabs for the individual month, you get photographs and records of the date and the county the offense was taken in and what the offenses were, and a link to whatever news articles published the information or whatever information's available, how they got it. None of these links work here, but if you type, go through the process of typing things in, it'll take you to the stories. And no case was able to find the eventual adjudication of what happened to these people. Did they get released, was it all, did they plea bargain down to misdemeanors? One that I chased down, he, it was a rape case. He got six weeks in jail. His car was impounded, he got his car back, paid a small fine, and was paroled out. Now, what brought all this up? Well, in January, February 6th, watching the news, I saw there was a group here in North Car, in Carteret County that was organizing a protest against deportation of illegals. And they were going to have another rally today. And got all over Facebook and social media about, "Come on now, join us if you agree." So, I came out just to, I didn't bring my popcorn. But about 130 to 150 people showed up. I was surprised it was that large, I thought maybe 15 or 20 people would show up, cold and windy and all that. And, but it wasn't about illegal immigration or deportation. The event really got hijacked by concerned citizens of Carteret County and became basically an, an anti-Trump agenda rally. And a lot of folks took the time and the effort to make homemade signs, you know, anti-Trump, anti-Musk, save the Constitution, protect our democracy, and a lot of chants about, you know, "We need democracy." And I was standing there thinking, well, you know, it's right in front of their eyes. You know, the state and local governments are, are democracies, majority rules, which is the definition of a democracy, and a democracy, the majority, guess to say what goes on. The country's a republic, but let's follow the, the democracy line of thought. You know, the people spoke on November 5th, President Trump got the majority of the votes. He also was very outspoken and very upfront about what his agenda was, what he planned on doing. And the people voted for that, they liked it. And since he's been initiating his agenda, support among the people has been very strong. He still holds a sizable majority on all the issues, including what Elon Musk is doing as Doge. Now, you heard a lot about the Doge, Musk was never elected and all that. Well, attorney, the inspector generals, you know, Trump fired, what, 11 of them here recently? Inspector generals are appointments, appointees, and they can be hired and fired. Basically, what Musk is doing, he's, he's doing the same thing an inspector general do, only instead of just having one department, he's looking at them all, trying to think, "Where's all this money gone?" Just recently, you heard Homeland Security lost like $1.4 billion, they don't know where it went. This is crazy, we can't keep on going like this, we've got $7 trillion in debt and climbing, and Donald Trump and Moog, and hopefully the Republican Congress, and hopefully a, a big group of Democrats who voted for Trump and the agenda, are willing to, you know, stay the course and let's get the, the corruption and everything out of our government. Let's get that back down to, you know, the pre-COVID levels of spending. Why all of a sudden, you know, with the COVID thing, spending jumped up to $2 trillion in additional budget spending. Well, COVID's pretty much over, except for Kymer Clark. He's dealing with a very severe respiratory thing, bad enough the way they stuck him in a hospital today. So, prayers for him. Anyway, I still have a minute and 45 seconds left. What do you all want to talk about?
Evidently, we had a malfunction with the buzzer.
I tried to, I tried to spit it all out there rapidly, but.
I thought you were trying to be part of the 100.
I thought we were going to break our calendar on that.
And if you're interested, my hat says, "Born in America, long, long time ago."
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
There certainly will.
Mr. Brad Honeycutt.
Brad Honeycutt, 216 South Spooner Street. Nothing to belittle what Mr. Kavanaugh said, but I wanted to get back to youth sports. From an individual that coaches both in Morehead City Little League to seashore soccer, to all kinds of other sports in between, I can tell you the impact of what youth sports does to kids. Some of the kids you saw come in here this morning, I've coached in multiple sports. And they're just wonderful kids, and I applaud them for coming in here and doing this. But at the same time, I think that as a county, as a location, is, is valuable and as, as prizes we have, I think that putting an investment into youth sports is something that, that we can do for the offseason. I've played in, kind of like Aubrey, who spoke earlier, I've played in locations all over the state. And I've talked to tournament directors and organizations that put on these facilities and have these, you know, 300, 100, even 30-acre facilities that rival anything we, like, we have in, in Carteret County. And it all started with a conversation that we, we are here today doing. And this conversation, you know, was years prior to, to them getting what they needed for that area, but it started with that conversation. And so, for that, I think all of us here, and, and the seven or six of us that we have here, there's probably 15, 20, 30 more that would be happy to have that conversation. And between these tournament directors and the, the individuals that I've spoke with at other locations such as like Ashboro, Wilson, that have these great locations, they have parents, that's, that's really the ones, they have parents that, that loved youth sports. They loved their kids being in sports, they saw the benefit of it, and they were the ones that helped drive this. And so, for that, I know I'm only a minute, two minutes into it, but if there's any help that we could provide to, to, to bring the funding or bring the, the support behind it, I think we're here and others to do it.
Thank you. Dr. Pat McLaughlin.
Good evening.
How you doing?
I'm here, I'm Pat McLaughlin, 121 Core Drive West in Morehead City. I appreciate you guys having me here today. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Carteret County. I don't have a real dog in the fight, I've got four grown children that have all graduated from West Carteret. I know some of you know that. They are very athletic, and I'm a big proponent of athletics. Coached 30 teams or so here in Carteret County, from seashore soccer to Morehead City Little League to Parks and Rec, Babe Ruth. And, you know, I haven't coached in 10 or 15 years with these kids, but I remember the fields were at capacity back then. So, you know, I'm hearing, you know, from others today that I can only imagine the tension that we have with, with a field capacity. And I just think that's obviously going to get more and more as more people move here. I saw this, you know, as far as going to other fields with kids in, in high school, seeing some other of the facilities that were just a lot nicer than ours, that actually was a co-chairperson of the Lonny Chiznall Hitting Facility at West Carteret. And we got that off the ground a couple of years ago.
And a donor.
And it was, it was private, yes, we, we had.
I won't recognize you, thank you.
Yes, we, we put a little bit of businesses that I was involved with. Well, one of the things I want to mention is, and I heard this earlier, you know, I probably, and I'm embarrassed to say this, I probably was over at 200 different travel tournaments in my lifetime with, with kids. And probably 90 of those were baseball. But I just remember being in Rocky Mountain, in Greenville, in New Bern, in Wilson, and just thinking, how nice it would be if we had something similar in Carteret County somewhere. somewhere. That certainly would have saved me a lot of money, trust me. But, I mean, just thinking of just sitting there, just as a business person, just looking at the economics. I mean, where would you rather be and take a family on a shoulder season for a soccer tournament? Would you rather go to Rocky Mountain or Carteret County? I mean, so my point is, I've just sat there thinking, my God, it would be unbelievable if we had something similar here that we could go and invest in. People would, you know, come in, bring their kids to the beach, and have these travel tournaments here. We just don't have it compared to these other places. It's not even close. Like, the Rocky Mountain facility has 14 baseball teams there, and I know that was privately funded. Same thing with Wilson and Gillette. But, I mean, if there's some way we could think around, outside the box here and bring something comparable here, I think it'd be a huge business boom for this area, especially in the shoulder seasons. You know, can we get ahead of this? I heard somebody say this. You know, what would complexes do here? They would alleviate field tension, they would add capacity, they would prepare for impending growth. I mean, what's going to happen 5, 10, 15, 20 years ago from now? We'll be ahead, we can catch up to our neighboring counties. We can attract travel tournaments here versus other areas. And then these other amenities to the community, I mean, whether we added some pickleball courts to them or some other things, they could add to the, you know, as far as the adult leagues go. I'm not smart enough to know how the solutions happen here. I mean, there's some big box stores could be leased or rented or bought. Maybe there's bonds or there's taxes to vote on for the next election for something like this. Maybe there's joint projects with private equity. Maybe some fee structures with the youth and the adult in the travel tournaments can offset some of the maintenance. But I think there's some money to be had for some of these travel tournaments. Certainly, there's huge booms for the economy. Heard somebody talking about the money that brings the local hotel motels, the restaurant. It's enormous. So the question I would ask, as I conclude here, is are we giving our kids in Carteret County the absolute best in athletic facilities to invest in them in the future? I mean, there's no better classroom than an athletic field and athletics. Are we providing the best going forward? Where are we going to be in five, or 10, or 15, or 20 years? I mean, are we thinking through this? You know, I'm not going to have kids that are going to enjoy these better facilities. You know, I'm not going to enjoy the.
And the grandkids.
But I am for my grandkids. And that's exactly, my question mark is exactly, you've answered it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doc.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
That's all that signed up. Does anyone else like to speak in public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I have to get my notes ready. I'm Holly Honeycutt. My husband and two kids are here. Unfortunately, we have one kiddo at home sick, so I'm going to scoot out after I do my public comment. But I, Holly Honeycutt, 216 South Spooner Street in Morehead City. I am here tonight, and I am a board member with the Morehead City Little League, and I'm also a board member with Seashore Soccer League. So I'm the mom of the kids that we travel to, Wilson, like Brad said, and Rocky Mountain, Ashboro, and all the places to play the sports. And it is so much fun. Like, I have really enjoyed being a sports mom. I have three boys, they're 5, 10, and 13. They love baseball, basketball, and soccer. Like I said, it's such a great privilege to watch them learn to play sports, as well as all the other very valuable lessons that are learned on a field or on a court. The old saying, "It takes a village," is true, and I see it happen many times on the sports fields. On a sports field, our children get to learn from adults other than their own parents. Children get to learn the rules of the game, but also the rules of life, the rules such as sometimes you win and sometimes you lose, life lessons for how to encourage a teammate when they're disappointed in how they played, or how to respond to a coach who gives you constructive feedback. Life lessons on how to work hard on the field and off the field. And one of my favorite lessons is how to order your special treat or your dinner at the concession stand at Swenson Park after your big game. Kids get to learn early finances of how much can I get for my 25 cents or my $2, how to look the concession stand worker in the eyes and advocate for themselves. I want the blue airhead, not the purple one. I get to volunteer in the concession stand at Swenson Park many nights during the spring baseball season, and it's really one of my favorites. And we invite you, like Mr. Chuck said, to come out on March 23rd and see us at the opening ceremonies for Little League. Truly, please come out. It would be our pleasure to have you. Great things are happening there, and they're being spearheaded by parents, uncles, aunts, grandparents, Dr. McLaughlin, if you're still in here, one day, right? And community members who are volunteering their time to give back to our youth. It's a beautiful sight to see. I'd also like to share in my last few seconds about how the Big Rock Foundation has been a huge supporter of Morehead City Little League. They have donated over $280,000 to Morehead City Little League in three separate grants. With these three grants, we have renovated Field 5, renovated the concession stands and upstairs press box, and this year we were awarded an $83,000 grant to improve the batting cages and make other needed repairs to the Swenson Park fields. Without Big Rock Foundation, we would not have the funds needed to make the changes necessary over the past six years. I am wrapping it up now, but in summary, I ask you all to visit Swenson Park and see the great things that are happening. And when you're making the budgets for the year, please value the youth of the county as much as we value the youth of the county. Like, we're moms and dads, and we're out there volunteering our time for them. So come see it and taste it and enjoy it as much as we do, so that we can get more fields and more playing space for these kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I add a quick footnote to Mrs. Honeycutt's comments?
Yes, go ahead.
That was the 22nd, right? Chuck, Grand, Saturday, that's Saturday. So 22nd, not the 23rd, for the grand opening of Little League. And that $280,000 was not just to the Morehead City Little League, but it went to Swenson Park. All that money was spent there, just FYI.
I got a question. How many fields would we need to get us out of a bind?
As many as you can.
I prefer a number like four, five, or 10.
We have 25 to 28 teams every spring season. We got three fields. We have to deal with the middle school comes out as much as possible, three parts of our parks. And if we had four or five more fields in Swenson, we make a swing of our game time over 5:15 to 5:45, 5 minutes break, and we start another game. Hour, hour and 15 minutes long, then we start another game. Sometime we've got teams to play until 8:05. School nights, we've got, they've got to cut it off.
I'll follow back up with you and get with them and share. But we'll expand on that conversation, but in order to keep going, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've got to get rolling. But I will, I promise I'll call you tomorrow. Is that good for everybody?
Well, I'd like to address the issue and see what we're looking at.
I understand. We'll take all the wishes we can get, but I don't know what we can get, but we'll try.
If we're landlocked at Swenson Park, I mean, would you come to Beaufort and play in some fields? Have we had Beaufort, so many fields in Beaufort, or?
Yes, sir, we do do that. We do send teams to the green. We send teams to the green.
Well, there's no, he's referring to there's not a lot of land left where you can get enough acreage to put fields, so there may be some over here that can be acquired if the county's looking at doing something in expansion. But we'll follow, we'll follow up.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
I've got a minute and 45 seconds left. Moving on.
We're going to dispute that, and we're moving along. Okay, that's it. Manager's report. Ms. Sharon?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I do have a few announcements and some things I'd like to share with everyone who's watching. First of all, I'd like to congratulate, we're very proud, and we've been talking about athletic fields. Our Director of Parks and Recreation, Tina Purifoy, was recently awarded the Extraordinary Chamber Leadership Award by our Chamber of Commerce for all of her efforts, and I know she's going to continue working hard for the community. We also congratulate Todd Kelly, who received the Conservation Distinguished Service of the Year Award from the North Carolina Soil and Water. And that is a statewide award. And a final statewide award, our own Coleman Killinger received the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Agent of the Year for the state for her innovations and service to 4H and our community, and her commitment to youth development, which is really something to be proud of. A couple of announcements, too. The 37th Annual Coastal Home and Garden Show will be at our Civic Center coming up on March 1st and 2nd for all of us who want spring to hurry up and come. Also, the Leon Mann and Richmond Center is offering a caregivers class. So for those folks in our community who are taking care of loved ones in their home, that starts March 17th, please reach out to the Leon Mann and Richmond Center to sign up for that. Carteret County Rape Crisis Program is also offering new support programs for survivors of sexual assault. We encourage you to reach out to them. Our Board of Elections has asked me to announce as well. If you get a postcard in the mail about your voter registration, please read that and pay attention to that. Some of them are just confirming your address at this time of year, but another set of cards has been sent out for folks who did do a change of address. It's important that you respond if it says to respond, and that will keep your voter registration valid. So it's something very important for all of us. Also, our tax office has started scheduling information about this year's tax revaluation, which we're required to do, of course, under North Carolina law. And if you have a homeowners association, or a church group, or a community organization that would like to learn more about tax revaluation in our county, how it works, and what it means, and how we go about this, please go online and sign up for that, or you're welcome to call our office, and we will help you find that. Finally, I would like to thank everyone on staff who worked hard to help us resume operations during our snow closure that we recently had, January 21st through 24th. And we heard a really bad rumor that we might have another problem this week, and we all are just ready for spring. And we're hoping that doesn't happen. But there is a chance for some ice this week, so please keep an eye out for that. And our final note tonight, I would like to take a few moments just to say that we have lost two employees unexpectedly in the last few weeks. And I would like to take a moment to honor these two individuals. One of our Sea Cats drivers, Bill Campbell, died unexpectedly from a health condition, dearly loved by the folks that worked with him and Sea Cats, and by the folks that were on his route. And he will be so missed. And then just about, I guess, week before last, we lost another employee unexpectedly. Tim Ross worked for Parks and Recreation and actually worked out on the Western Fields, and he died unexpectedly. He was a hardworking man. He was raising a family and supporting them, and actually was also working a second job at Dollar General to have enough money for his family. A beloved friend, again, he died unexpectedly, and we just, our thoughts and prayers are with his family, both of their families, and with all of their coworkers who continue to grieve that loss. And that's all I have for this evening, unless you have questions. Thank you for letting me serve you.
Thank you, madam manager. Next, we have appointments. Board of Equalization and Review. Looks like we have seven folks. Do you want to take them all at one time, or?
Yeah, because they're commissioner-specific.
All right. Dr. Amy Locke, Commissioner Waldrath.
From District 4. I'd like to reappoint Dr. Amy Locke to a one-year term as our representative from District 4.
All right. Commissioner Quinn?
I would like to reappoint Jeffrey Nelson to a one-year term on the Board of Equalization and Review.
Thank you.
And I would also like to nominate Mr. Nelson to serve as Chair of the Board of Equalization and Review.
Okay. Commissioner Shan?
I'd like to nominate for reappointment Mr. Matt Shortway, my district.
Thank you. Commissioner Mansfield?
I'll renominate, again, Larry Land from District 3. And also, on behalf of Mr. Clark, I'll nominate Allison Bernauer, both from District 3.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
I'd just like to nominate Leslie Daniels to appoint one year for the Board of Equalization.
All right. And I'll nominate Robert Buckley. So all in favor of those individuals with Jeffrey Nelson being the chairman? All right. Any opposed? All is happy. All right. Carteret County Planning Commission, Eddie Myers has a reappointment to a three-year term.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to renominate Ed Myers to the Planning Commission.
Nominated by Vice Chairman Mansfield, is her second?
Second.
I'll second her.
Seconded by Commissioner Waldrath. All in favor? That has. Carteret County Civic Byway Commission. Those individuals, Catherine Chadwick, Greg Hartman, Karen Amspacker, Lily Miller, and myself as the commissioner. Get that committee going. Again, it went dormant there for a few years, but there's a lot of federal funds, and we desperately need help with Highway 70, the erosion along there. And the more people screaming to help us, the better, so.
Okay, so that's a nomination by the chairman?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Excellent. Those are folks who are appointed. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate for reappointment Mr. Chuck Bryant.
All in favor of Mr. Bryant? All right. Mr. Bryant's appointed. And I believe that's all of the appointments. Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Waldrath, would you like to start?
I'll be happy to start. Happy President's Day. I'm a little shocked that we're at work today on a federal holiday, but it's all right. Maybe it's not a state holiday.
We've got to get it done for the citizens.
I'll look into that for next year. I'd like to acknowledge the Boy Scouts, the Scouts that came tonight for Mr. Paul Murphy's acknowledgement. I was not a scout, but I was a Marine, so I think I can go back and figure out what it would have felt like if I had been a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout. And that's great, and we're very happy to have those in our community. They do a lot that's not even publicized, so we appreciate that. I certainly am a product of West Carteret Sports. I was never in the Little League, but I certainly heard the families and the supporters loud and clear about the need for extracurricular space enrichment and an investment in our facilities in this county. I am on boards which highlight the drug problem that we have in this county, and I see that as a direct response to not having enough in our community. So I am going to dedicate myself to be a part of whatever I can do to make the county more accessible with fields and athletic events. Fixing the fields, that's something that I also heard, that we may have field space, but it may not be productive for fields, so maybe we can renovate some existing space. That may be some part of a solution to that. And I'm so sorry to hear the passing of the two employees from our town leadership and Sea Cats. We see those vans a lot on the street. So that concludes my comments. Thank you for letting me serve.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldrath. Commissioner Moore?
First, I'd like to hope everybody had a great Valentine's Day. I'd like to congratulate Paul Murphy for a job well done, great Scott master leading our children, and just a good example for good leadership. My heart goes out to the plane crash victims and the families. I just pray the Lord will give them the strength that they need to get through each day that they have. Good, there's very, very bad things happening, but my heart goes out to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say thank you to all that came out and spoke today in favor of additional athletic facilities. Both of my sons came up through Morehead City Little League. Coach Jim Taylor was a big influence on their life, really heck of a guy, dedicated to that cause. Certainly, congratulations, and an echo from my fellow commissioners to Mr. Paul Murphy for his dedication to our youth and to our community. I'd also like to give congratulations to the girls, West Carteret Reedley Team. They won their second back-to-back state championships on Saturday. So a great achievement for those young ladies. I'd also like to congratulate all those that are being honored tonight at our community college's Black History Celebration that's being held even as we speak. I'd like to offer prayers for the family of Mr. James Creach and. I'd like to offer prayers for the family of Mr. James Creach and young Ethan Pittman that lost their lives in a fire at their home on Merriman Road. I understand there's been a GoFundMe page set up by one of their family members, and I'd like to encourage you in joining me in offering a personal donation for their families going through this tragic and sad time. As we close our meeting here today, we, on the day that we celebrate past and current presidents of this great nation, I find myself thinking about George Washington's farewell address that he delivered in 1796. So as a historian, I've got to give a little bit of a lesson. It's our tradition on a President's Day that George Washington's farewell address is read on the floor of the Senate Chamber. And I encourage everyone to take the time to listen to this speech, or to read this speech, as it remains vitally important to our nation. His farewell address remains profoundly relevant to contemporary American society and politics. His warnings against political partisanship, excessive foreign entanglements, and threats of national unity resonate in today's polarized political climate. Washington urged Americans to prioritize national interest over partisan loyalties, cautioning that intense factionalism can lead to erosion of democratic values. His emphasis on morality, education, and civic responsibility underscores the need for an informed and engaged citizenry. As the United States navigates complex global challenges and domestic divisions, Washington's wisdom serves as a timeless reminder of the principles necessary to sustain a stable and thriving democracy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Shan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, I concur and reiterate all the comments that have been made so far by my fellow commissioners. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and beyond that, I will hold further comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shan, Vice Chairman Mansfield?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy and prosperous President's Day. From a historical perspective, just as commissioners, we've worked on President's Day and Martin Luther King Day, and just so happens those holidays fall on the third Monday, and that's when we meet. So sometimes we've taken them off, sometimes we work on them, but it's just kind of depends on how the calendar falls, and Lori does a great job of keeping that all together, so I'll take it any way you give it to me. We'll get the work done. I really would like to, I mean, I know everybody said it, but, I mean, Mr. Murphy, to honor him and commend him. I've served this county and area for a lot of years in multiple capacities in sports and civic duties. In forty-five years, God bless him, I do not know how he's done it. He is the Iron Man and the hero, and I commend him for all of that. And as the sports parents said, and everybody else, I mean, our youth is our future, and I think Mr. Taylor would attest to that, sitting in our audience. I, I would like to remember the families of the victims from the fire that Commissioner Quinn just spoke of, and also the families of the Down East tragedy. Three years, I, I don't, I've had some really good friends lose some parents here over the last couple of weeks, and I guess we're getting to that age where that type of thing happens. One of the comments that I made, the happiest days of your life are the birth of your children, and unless you've ever had a child, you can't really know what that happiness means. I've had friends that had children way before me, and I, they talked all about it, and I'm thinking, yeah, 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 but until you have that first one, then it was like a ton of bricks hit me. I'm like, okay, I get it now. But the saddest days in your life will be the loss of your parents, or if you happen to lose your children before you go, because that's just not the natural order it's supposed to happen in. But life goes on, God has a plan, and we all have faith, so we'll move on from that. I'd like to extend those same heartfelt sympathies and those, those losses to the family of employees, Bill Campbell and Tim Ross. We value all of our employees greatly, and we thank them for working for us. We appreciate them, and I hate that we've lost two, two people. Hate to lose them in retirement, but I really hate to lose them from the world in general. So my condolences go out to all of the people that have experienced that loss. And I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out tonight and sharing their opinions, and I think Commissioner Quinn made some great comments that President Washington made that sometimes I wish more people would reflect on. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mansfield. I, too, would like to offer my personal condolences to our county employees, Bill Campbell and Tim Ross. Certainly tragic, losing those folks. Paul Murphy, forty-five years as a scoutmaster, camping eight hundred glorious nights in the woods with twenty or thirty kids running around, and it was a Job that had all the patience in the Bible. I think Paul Murphy's right up there with Job, having a lot of patience, so congratulations to him. The ballfields, Mr. Chuck, I, I am interested in how many ballfields it's going to take, what type of area we need to prepare for. I believe in prevention instead of, you know, if our kids are involved in sports and school activities, I think that's a good thing, and I, I do want, I think this whole board is open eyes about how we can prepare more athletic fields, and not only the economic benefit it brings to the county, but the physical fitness and, you know, the, all the lessons you learn being on a team. So I'm going to let you and Mark work that out, and he'll convey the message to all of us, so we'll go that, go that route on that. Last time we had the Cub Scouts here, Jonathan Robinson's grandson gave us a nice prayer, and I went and presented them all with a, it wasn't a resolution, it was kind of a certificate for being here and a county pin, and the Davis Scout Center, and they gave me this commissioner's prayer they had framed that he said that night, so we're going to hang that up here in the room. I think that's very nice, if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, look that over. With that, that's all the business we have tonight. We do have to go into closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11?
So moved.
For permitted use of discussion of approved attorney-client privilege.
All is in favor?
Mansfield, Quinn, Shan?
For the, for the record, I played for Morehead City Elks.